I would like to call the Wichita Public Schools Board of Education meeting for August the 10th, 2020, to order. Would you please, the Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region, where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We are going to have a moment of silence, but before we do, we have a long-term board member who served on the Board of Education for 10 years, who's passed away, John Frye. And John is, was the Director of Starkey for over 30 years, and he was also the Social Services Director at the Salvation Army. And he was President of the Board from 1980 to 1981. We always appreciate service and we send our condolences to his family. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. We do have six of our board members present and one remote, so we are going to identify ourselves so that you'll know who is here and who is remote. I am Cheryl Logan, the President of the Board, and I serve the all district, at-large district. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1.
Julie Hedrick, District 2.
Mike Rody, District 5.
Stan Reeser, District 4.
Ron Rosales, District 6.
And remotely, Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District 3.
Thank you very much. Mike?
Statement about the COVID-19 Modified BOE Meeting Format. My name is Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. This regularly scheduled public meeting of the Wichita Public Schools is taking place at the North High Lecture Hall, 1437 Rochester in Wichita. Due to the Governor's Declaration of Emergency and due to health and safety concerns that exist because of COVID-19, no members of the public are present at this meeting. This meeting is available to be viewed live by the public in the following ways: WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, the district's website at www.usd259.org/wptvonline, and livestream apps for phone, Roku, and Apple TV by searching WPS-TV. Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on the WPS YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV Cox Cable Channel 20. The agenda for this meeting was published on August 6, 2020, at www.usd259.org/boe, under BOE Meetings, Agendas, and Minutes. The news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. At this meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. The usual public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at board meetings has been removed from the agenda. In its place, an email public comments item has been added. Information about how patrons can submit email comments is included on Page 1 of the BOE agenda. Public communications will not be placed back in the agenda until the public again starts attending meetings. Thank you. And today, under email public comment, we did receive comments from two members of the public.
And the Board has received those comments, and they will be attached to our meeting minutes. Next item, Mike?
Under Education, None Submitted, Consent.
Okay. Ben, do you have anything to pull off Consent?
Yes, I would like to pull Item E3, Data Services for Mobile Internet Additional Funding.
Okay. E3, Ben? Julie?
Nothing to pull.
I have nothing to pull. Mike?
I'd like to pull Item D3, Greater Wichita YMCA Middle School.
Okay. Stan?
No Consent Items to Pull.
Ron?
The item has already been pulled by Mike Rody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
I'm going to vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the other items on the agenda?
Ben Blankley, District 1. I move we approve the consent agenda except for Items D3 and E3.
Thank you.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, second.
It's been moved by Ben and seconded by Julie that we accept the other items on the agenda. And I do not see my...
I'm going to vote by name.
Oh, we have to vote by, yes, we have to vote, because we have a remote person, we have to vote by voice today. Let's start with you, Ernestine. Do you approve the rest of the agenda?
I vote yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, vote yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
The other items on the agenda pass 7-0. Let's take, just in the order, Ben, you pulled D3?
E3.
E3, beg your pardon.
Yeah, I just had two questions about this. So, how will we identify which families need these, this mobile broadband?
I have the answer, but I see my friend moving, so I'm going to allow him to answer that question. Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer.
We currently have, inside of online enrollment, there's a question that explains broadband, and as those families, and we've come up with this number kind of out of that data figure currently, and will look to expand as it's needed as folks enroll, but currently that's the data point that we have, and I'm acknowledging the families that need it. So, from an elementary standpoint, we would, we would provide that family a MiFi, because that MiFi device supports up to 15 devices, and then for secondary, it would be built into that SIM card in the device that we purchased earlier this year for those students.
Okay. Yeah, my second question is kind of, is related. When slash if we use all of these, is it, will be another board action to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Come on? Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. I move we approve Item E3.
Stan Reeser, District 4, I second.
The motion was made by Ben Blankley and seconded by Stan Reeser. Please cast your votes, starting with Ben.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Next item that was pulled, was pulled by Mike?
Yes, my question on this is, and I know this is something that we've done in the past, and it's a, it's a good program, and we need to do it, but one of the questions that I came up with was, we're sending, it looks to me, from 16 different middle schools to the greater YMCA's, are these kids going to be separated by school, or are they going to be co-mingled when they get to the YMCA, and, or we can have folks from different schools in contact that don't need to be?
That is an awesome question, and we have not had that conversation with the YMCA at this point, and I'm going to look at Gil, and maybe he's had it, but I have not. Have you had that question? So, we will take that question and concern to the why, and work with them accordingly as it relates to the way that we're separating and podding our kids. We'll talk to them about that same kind of a process, and see what we can do to work with them on that.
Okay, I'd like to table this one until the next meeting, if that's possible.
Would this cause any delay with our starting of the school year?
I'm going to let the person that this falls under, Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, answer that question.
Hi, this is Gil Alvarez. Just to answer some of the questions, the after-school programs for the middle school with the YMCA is not specific and intermingle with other students from other schools. This is an after-school program for their particular students at the school. As far as keeping them in clusters, that is a great question. We can definitely look into, students in specific classes can stay together versus intermingling with others, depending on the number of help that they have with the YMCA currently right now. The YMCA is in discussion with, to see if they can actually get enough of the volunteers and the people to help work the after-school programs as well. So, we're going to continue to talk with the YMCA to find out when is the appropriate start to the after-school program, but it won't probably be till the end of September before we can even look to start that program anyway. But we'll, we'll have the questions for you as well, but it is specifically, the after-school program is for specific schools after school. No intermingling amongst schools.
So, there won't be a problem if we delay this until the 20th to vote on it?
No, that won't be a problem.
Do you want to make a motion, Mike?
I'd like to move that we table this D3 until we can get further information.
Is there a second?
Can I just say?
Sure.
I was just wondering, it's pretty much already been answered, I think, but, so, we're not sure as far as the start date, pending August 20th, right?
That is correct. We, we have, unless, Cheryl, you have something. We definitely will, we are usually, with even any after-school program, you got to give kids time to get to school, then they sign up for it, you know, because you work in middle school.
Yeah.
And it will be that same type of setup.
Okay.
So, we're not sure exactly when we will start, but we definitely, as you know, the after-school programming is at the school, after school.
Right.
So, it would definitely be, we, we just don't have, it's their staff, so we would have to just communicate with their staff, talk to them about which groupings of kids we would like to stay together, and see if they have enough staff to be able to accommodate that for, for us. That's what we're talking about.
Okay. So, for planning purposes, for our parents, just wait until the 20th, and we'll have probably more direction.
And that's not unusual. We always, we never start this program the day school starts.
Right, right.
We always have a delay.
Yeah. Yeah, I used to work it, and it's a great program, and kind of go on what Mike was referred to, I know that the YMCA usually separates schools on, on specific days. So, one group will go one place, and they never really intermingle. There's some exceptions, but yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. We still have a motion on the floor with no second?
Ron Rosales, District 6, I second.
Okay. So, the motion has been made to just delay this until the next meeting, when we can get more information. Ernestine, do you want to vote, please?
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Mike Rody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
The motion passes 7-0. We will put this back on a future meeting agenda as soon as we have the information.
That is fine. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you very much. Next item, Mike?
Under Policy and Operations, None Submitted, Finance, 2020-21 Budget Authorization to Publish Notice of Hearing. The proposed 2020-21 district budget will be shared with the Board at today's meeting. The 2021 Notice of Hearing will be provided at the Board Table, which is in your packets. It is recommended the Board approve the publication of the 2021 Notice of Hearing that will set the annual budget hearing for August 24, 2020.
Welcome, Susan Willis. It's good to see you again. It doesn't seem possible that we're voting on a budget, but this is just crazy times right now.
We've made it to at least this milestone.
There you go.
And nothing stops us. Yep. Well, good afternoon, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, members of the Board.
Thank you.
As our President said, this is our milestone moment, as far as this is our presentation of our full budget report and our Notice of Hearing for the 2021 budget. So, we'll start today similar to how we started last, the last time I spoke to you, and that was kind of to put some terminology in front of the Board and in front of our public, because there are a lot of different ways that we look at budget numbers. And one of the primary roles that the Board of Education has is to adopt a legal maximum budget, so it's commonly called the Legal Max. It establishes kind of the upper end of budget authority that we cannot exceed as we go through the next school year. So, there is, there is a lot of differences when you look at that Code 99 that's in front of you. That's what gets published in the paper. Those three columns that are in that report, there's two actual expenditure columns, and then the third column is our Legal Max Budget Authority. So, when you compare those, they should be less. If they're not less, then, I probably shouldn't be sitting here, I shouldn't have a job, because we've then overextended ourselves somewhere. So, we should always spend less than we budget, because we only get so much money, and we can't exceed the amount of funding we receive. So, as we look at those actuals versus budget, you will see a pretty large discrepancy, and there should be. Some years are going to be a larger discrepancy, or a larger shortage than others, and if you look at what happened to us last year, and we're going to go through this in a minute, but we had, the, the final quarter of the school year was, was basically shut down. We should have had some reduction in expenditures, therefore, when you look at our net expenditures for 2020, those numbers are lower than anticipated, and that makes sense. So, anyway, we want to kind of cover those, the actual expenditures versus budgeted expenditures versus budgeted authority. Your job today is to approve that maximum budget authority that we will establish for next year. So, just some budget highlights and assumptions that were used to build the budget. The base state aid per pupil did increase from 4436 per student to $4,569 per student. That funded base aid FTE decreased, though, as far as the number of FTE students that we get a count on that base, decreased 182.9 FTE, and that is using fiscal year 19's enrollment. So, we have to look two years back to get our highest number. We do, and we did build the budget based on an anticipating weighting decrease of between 1% and 2%, but we have built in some contingencies on that weighting to account for some count variations. Since this is a very unique year for us, we don't know exactly where our weightings are going to land, so we have built in some contingencies in those to account for ups and downs in those weighting funds. The budget is also based on a 4.5% assessed valuation growth. That was the assessed valuation growth that we experienced for 1920, and then we have built a budget based on a maximum LOB authority of 33% of the general fund. So, we'll start with the mill levies. The overall decrease didn't change from when we presented in July. We had a little variation between the LOB and the bond, just a little adjustment there. But essentially, our general fund mill will be at 20 mills. That's statutorily set. We don't have the ability to modify that. Our supplemental general mill will be at 17.045 mills. That is with us moving to the maximum authority of 33% of the general fund. We're doing this to obtain maximum budget flexibility as we go into this school year with a significant amount of unknowns coming at us. The capital outlay basically remains at 8 mills. That's, again, maximum authority. We can't exceed 8 mills in the, in the capital outlay fund, based on our needs in capital. Bond and interest, we are decreasing to 7.828 as we forecasted our long-term needs in bond and interest, and we feel this is an adequate mill levy to get us through for the foreseeable future. We also brought down the special liability just a little bit, again, based on need in that particular fund to account and cover torts and those type of expenditures that the district experiences. So, again, our total mill levy for the 2021 budget year will be 52.973 mills. That's a decrease of .21 mills going into next year. Showing you the long-term trend in our mill levy history, going back to the '09-10 school year, you can see that we have purposely tried to keep it relatively stable. We've had a few ups and downs. Typically, that's related to equity issues in the school finance formula. We have been on a, on a slight, slight downtrend these past few years as more LOB state aid has come into the formula. So, I think we're, we feel pretty good that we have maintained this even through some challenging years in school finance, so 52.973 mills. So, here's our, kind of our look back. This is the numbers you're seeing on that Code 99. We, in the, for fiscal year 20, we adopted a budget of $761 million. Our actual expenditures for fiscal year 20 were $709 million. And again, that kind of demonstrates that difference between budget authority, the max the district could spend in any given year, and where actuals come in. A lot of that is kind of built around capital outlay. We budget in capital to give ourselves some maneuvering room, but we really don't want to spend it all. We need it for these outlying years and to catch up on deferred maintenance, but we've have, these last few years, been trying to build more budget authority into capital outlay. You'll see here in just a few minutes, I've built even more into this year, knowing that we are going to have some unforeseen expenditures and even some known expenditures that are going to have to go into capital, because there won't be money elsewhere to cover. So, what we did, just to kind of compare apples to apples, is we did actually put you a screenshot of looking at last year's actual adopted budget to our proposed budget for this year. So, again, $761 million for fiscal year 20. For fiscal year 21, we are proposing a budget of $809 million. That's an increase in budget authority of almost $48 million. So, how does that break down? I'm just going to kind of cover the, kind of the bigger fund highlights. In the general fund, that's before we make any transfers, remembering that all weighted funds go through the general fund. So, pre-K, at-risk, at-risk dollars, everything flows through the general fund, and then from the general fund, it transfers out. And typically, we're transferring out more than what we get in that particular weighting. So, for example, we might get $4 million in pre-K at-risk funding, but we transfer out $7 million, because we need $7 million of pre-K expenditures to cover that program. And that's typical for all our, all our programs, such as at-risk, CTE, bilingual. Typically, we don't get enough in weighting, so the general fund supports those initiatives. So, right now, our increase in budget authority in the general fund is slated at 13, almost 13.4 million. So, that will also include our special ed transfers, and that, that contingency on those counts are kind of embedded in that 13.4 million, and then the new state aid. So, again, that's kind of a slightly higher number than we actually anticipate getting, but that covers us for count variations. It covers us for that final special ed adjustment that we don't actually receive until next May. So, a lot of different things go into this general fund maximum budget authority calculation, but we're feeling that's, that 13.4 million is a, is a good max budget authority as we go into fiscal year 21. We showed this to you last, last time, but this is what we're proposing for the supplemental general fund. We are proposing moving from 116 million, almost 117 million last year in maximum budget authority to 130 million, 130.5 million in maximum budget authority in the supplemental general fund, which is 33% of the general fund. We're exercising full authority. We can't go any higher than 33%, and that will drive about 13.8 million into the budget. Now, we may not get the full, have the full 130 million when the budget actually kind of finalizes next June, because if the general fund counts, those weightings actually do come in lower as we anticipate, that impacts the supplemental general fund, 33% of a smaller number. So, we may not get the full 13.8, but regardless, we want to maximize the authority to make sure that we have enough coverage for those expenditures, which we outlined for you last time, already exceed what we're getting in some of our federal aid packages. So, again, the more, the more federal aid that comes in, the less we have to tap into some of these other, other budget opportunities. So, just to kind of show you a few more funds that we're, where this kind of, this $47 million budget increase is coming from, a large part of it's coming out of capital outlay. We are proposing a $14 million budget authority increase in capital outlay, so that will take it from last year's almost 50 million to almost $64 million. And you approved the internet piece just today. That's an example of the items that we may need to push through to capital in order to meet the needs of our students and our staff during this very unusual pandemic response year coming at us. Virtual fund, again, with the increase in enrollment in virtual, you would anticipate some budget changes here, and we are proposing a million dollars more into virtual. The bond and interest payments are up, will be up this year for almost $2 million, and the fund can adequately cover that at $42.7 million. Nutrition services is, we're actually, right now, budgeting a decrease. That is based on the potential loss in funding that we anticipate coming in related to the differences in serving meals as we go through the MySchool Remote, the On-Site, and virtual programming. So, this is a fund we're going to have to watch very carefully through the course of the year. It is a fund that we may need to support with federal package relief if we get some additional dollars there. It's, it's, it's just going to be impacted by the change in dynamic of what school looks like going into, going into September. Federal funds are up $9 million. There's CARES Act, or what's remaining of the CARES Act, going into fiscal year 21. It's not the $13 million, because we've already spent a big chunk of it at the end of the fiscal year, as we put a purchase order out there for the $24 million in technology. The first purchase order went actually before the end of the fiscal year. So, that, that is part of what's remaining. And then special education as a fund is up about $4.5 million. This is primarily related to the transportation increase, $6 million and a half for our vendor increase on that contract. Half of that is sped. So, that's a good chunk of what's going into special ed, and then just normal compensation type of increases in that particular fund. I think the key takeaway related to the particular budget that we are proposing is that the 87% that's focused on the direct support of student remains unchanged. This is the same breakdown. It's shifted a little bit, nutrition services a little bit less, transportation's a little bit more, but 87% of our operating budget is focused on the classroom. So, that, that has, that's always kind of in the forefront of our minds as we develop our budget, is how do we ensure that our dollars are making it into support of the classroom? So, we take this wheel very seriously, and as we're building the budget, we, we analyze those percentages to make sure that that budget supports the key mission and the, and the strategic plan of the district, and so having that money directed into the classroom is critical. So, we will have a completed draft of the budget basically out online that our stakeholders can go review. That will include the Code 99 that will be published in the area newspapers on Wednesday, so anyone can review and certainly can submit questions. The public hearing would be set then for August 24, and that's when we would adopt the budget. And so, what we are asking the Board this afternoon is that we are recommending that the Board establish 6:00 PM on August 24, 2020, as the public hearing and budget adoption for the 2020-21 budget. And at that, with that, I will answer any questions the Board might have.
Mike Rody?
Well, it's nice to see that we're finally getting to the 2005 level.
We, we are, actually.
Yeah, we're, we're gaining. Every year, we're gaining. Hallelujah. Couple of clarifications. I want to make sure that some people don't remember some of the things year to year. Our LOB goes to the state after we collect it and send it to the state, and then they send us back a portion. And we get a, and I can't remember what that percentage is.
What are we talking about? The, the general fund, you mean? The 20 mills?
Yes.
So, yes, the, the 20 mills we collect locally, that all, every school district sends their 20 mills to the state, and then we actually get that back in the form of state aid based on that 4569 per student. I haven't actually calculated that to see what that's going to be for 21, and right off the top of my head, I can't recall what it is. And right off the top of my head, I can't recall what it is as far as what it was last year. So I can get back to you with that information.
That's, I just want to make sure the people are realizing that we're losing some of our own LOB to the state, and they're using it as state aid.
They count it as part of our aid, but it is local tax-driven, so yes.
Right. And the, it's a number that I can't even fathom anymore because when I came on the board, it wasn't even close to this. But the $809 million that we're budgeting this year, the one thing you didn't talk about was capers. What's the capers number this year?
We're budgeting capers at 60, the flow-through of capers, that's $60 million.
Okay, and that's important for people to know because that's money that we get, part of our budget, but we don't get to spend it.
It's the funding that basically the state flows through. It stays in our account for about 30 seconds, and it flows right back out.
Right. And that's one of those things, the state looks good, and we don't, people don't understand, well, we can't spend that money.
Yeah, it drives the cost per pupil up as far as that $60 million is part of the overall budget. But we don't have control over how we spend that. It basically comes in, goes right back out. And there's a number of funds, obviously, that are restricted. We're still primarily a restricted fund district as far as two-thirds of our budget has some sort of target or restriction on it. There's really only a third of our budget that has flexible usage.
Thank you for all your hard work. I do appreciate it.
Kudos to the financial services teams. They did a phenomenal job for the last few months to put all this together and in the middle of an upgrade. So yeah, they're doing great.
And I want to just have her wave her hand up there. Ms. Addy, I just think it's important to recognize her. She's amazing. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One, the federal funds that we've gotten for COVID you have here in the budget. And there is talk about Washington adding some funding for school districts. It's not passed yet. But where do we stand with that? How would we, if we get that, huge if, if we get that, where would we add that into this budget authority?
So federal funds, we include that in the budget, but we don't have to, there's no maximum budget authority like there are in the other funds. So if we do get another federal package, it's actually a pull-down reimbursement process. So if we decided with, if we had a HEROES Act or a HEALS Act or whatever the version we're going to potentially get at some point, if we actually do get it, it would set up, it would either come to us through the state in the form of some sort of grant. Typically, that's how those federal funds work, is the KSTE then would actually allocate that probably based on a Title I allocation process. That's how the CARES money worked. And so then we come up with what we need, our spending plan. And then as we spend those dollars, we're able to draw down that additional dollars. But it doesn't have to be reflected per se in here at this point.
So we don't have to add that in for our proposed budget?
No, and if we did have any issues, we could always come back and republish. But I don't believe and I'll, that we don't have to republish for federal funds.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And Cheryl, I want to also stay here for a moment. Can you also talk about those dollars as it relates to our other school systems or, you know, organizations that we also have to support with those dollars?
Sure. We talked a little bit about this in July. The fact that when we get federal packages like this, there is a non-public portion that basically passes through us and we distribute to the schools. And it's similar that we don't actually send the money. We actually have to coordinate the services. So if they need, they need technology, then we coordinate the purchasing of that technology and write the check to the vendor. And then the technology gets shipped to the school, the non-public school. So there's just a tremendous amount of work related to the process of getting dollars into those non-public schools because we're responsible. We have to ensure that they follow the same guidelines that we have to follow. So it's, there is just a lot of, there's a lot of accountability related to those dollars on us. Now, we are able to have, there is an indirect charge that we can apply to federal funds for the labor. But typically, because there's just not enough work for a person, that falls to staff to basically absorb those roles in their regular days. So it's just a bit of work.
And I just want to be clear. So when we get a federal package, we don't get to spend that exact amount. So for instance, if you get $17 million, we don't get to spend $17 million because I believe this last time, we had to give 25% of that, we had to give to non-public. So just making it clear to our community also that, because I've heard some folks say, well, you got, well, we didn't get, we actually, we had to share. And it's okay to share, but just recognize that some of the dollars that we did receive, we were not able to spend them because we had to share it.
And this, particularly in the form of CARES, that information was released very late as far as the process for the non-public schools. Typically, like with Title I, we're getting that non-public allocation at the same time as we get our allocation. So we can start to make our plans. We know what our piece is. We can support their piece. It took, it took the decision-makers a very long time to decide how CARES was going to work related to non-public institutions. So again, we were planning at around 16, 17 million. And then now we're having to backtrack a little bit and say, well, it's probably more like 13 to 14. That caused us quite a bit of challenge when we had a plan based on 17, and now we have to back that off. So some needs under at least that particular plan would go unmet unless we're now going into these other parts of the budget.
Okay, and I assume that Wichita Public Schools District, the schools that reside in the Wichita Public Schools Districts are the ones we share with. We don't share with the whole Cedric County because not everybody's in our district in Cedric County.
It's city of Wichita.
So it's the whole city of Wichita, even if they aren't in our boundaries?
Correct.
Because we have.
Yes. My understanding is it's the city of Wichita.
So an Andover or a Mays wouldn't be doing the same thing?
Shouldn't be. But I will tell you that the rules are not actually all nailed down yet. And we actually haven't seen the final allocation process, partly because we actually have to go pull some of that data and send it to the state before they'll validate. So it's a little bit of a moving target at this point.
Okay. I do have one more question, and that is you mentioned that our budget goes online, and you gave the address here. When will that be available to the public?
It should go on Wednesday, I believe, Wednesday?
So it's published on Wednesday and it goes online on Wednesday?
With the notice appearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Ben?
Yes, Ben Linkley, District 1. So state aid weighting for virtual students. I know I've seen a couple members of the public get confused on whether the district receives more or less state aid for an official virtual student.
So virtual weighting is an interesting calculation. It is a current-year calculation, so we don't look back at the prior two years like we do with the regular base aid. It is current-year weighting. And right now, you have to be a full-time student. You can't even be an hour short. You must be a full-time student. For that full-time student FTE, we would get $5,000. For a part-time FTE, so if you're an hour short, we only receive 1,700. So there's not, it's a pretty good discrepancy between a full-time virtual and some sort of part-time. Even if you're a .9 virtual, you only receive the 1,700 in weighting. Virtual students do not receive at-risk dollars because they're not eligible for the free and reduced meals. So there is some loss for kids that perhaps were in our, were in schools traditionally and have chosen to go to virtual. If they were receiving free lunch, we aren't going to receive potentially the aid, the at-risk aid on that. Now, that's just one of those, that's just the way the formula works.
Could you tell them the difference between that? Because that was pretty significant for us. So if a student is a virtual student and they are an at-risk student, and we may get the 5,000, but could you talk to them a little bit about what that looks like?
Sure, we receive for at-risk weighting, it's .484% of the base aid. So $2,200, $2,300 for at-risk student per FTE. So when you, when your students, we're getting $431 more than the base aid, but we potentially lose 22 or 2300 in at-risk weighting because they're not eligible. So it is kind of that fine balance when we were looking at what can the virtual fund manage? How many of those students would be pure virtual? And we don't lose the weighting because again, what are we using our at-risk dollars for? Evidence-based programming that primarily pay for teachers. So it's very difficult to say, well, we'll just cut over here because we need it over here. Well, first of all, those dollars don't equal. And a lot of those programs benefit a whole lot of other students. So it's, that's a, virtual is just tricky as far as a funding mechanism because it doesn't match. It's not a dollar for dollar. So you don't put a dollar over here and lose a dollar over here. You might gain, you know, 40 cents over here, but you lose $3 over here. So it's, and again, it's not every student. But it's very difficult to determine what that could be because you're not asking those questions at the time of enrollment.
So are virtual students that are supported with this fund, would that only be the students in EI Academy?
It is the students in the formal virtual program, which is our EI Academy for 2021 school year. So it's not MySchool Remote. Those are kind of the same brick and mortar funding as the students who will actually attend at the locations.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Another question I have is kind of a general question about the public hearing. Since we're in the COVID-modified meeting format where the public is viewing but not hear and interacting, and this will be the first time we have an official budget hearing during this meeting format, is there any special things that we need to do in regards to that?
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Mike.
We are actually planning for the budget public hearing to have the podium open. And people will be able to register to speak, and they will line up out in the hallway, come to the podium in the lecture hall, and then when they're done speaking, they will leave.
We just thought that it was important, when you have this type of a budget, to allow opportunities for anyone who would like to speak upon it to do so. And we understand that we have this situation with COVID-19. But again, we believe and we are modeling transparency and ability to engage with our community. And we thought it was important to do so for this budget because it was such a big deal for us.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Stan?
Stan Reeser, District 4. Susan, I was watching the replay of our last meeting. I think it was because I wanted to see Ben do a shout-out to Elmo. So I, I thought I'd heard it, but I wanted to make sure I actually did. But we had, we had one awkward sentence in that meeting that said, and it ended, we're $10 million in the hole. And I thought that maybe created some confusion. So I wanted to clarify that from last meeting. When we said that last time, we were talking $10 million behind on our COVID response and what we need to do in that area. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. The budget is balanced. And, yeah, we are, we are, we are not, we are not budgeting in the negative. But there will be obviously those pockets, nutrition services being a good example, where that fund will potentially need some assistance because it will not probably drive the revenues it typically does related to the expenditures it will have to expend in order to meet the needs of our students. So we might need to go into another area. If federal aid is one option, contingency would be another to support those needs. So yes, that probably was a poor choice of words. But it was, the budget itself is balanced, but the list of COVID needs that we are going to be able to meet, we can't do it based on the current budget allocations. Some of those needs, which is why it's so important for us to prioritize, what has to be done in order to get students safely to school and our staff to save? Those are 100% high priority. They come first. So we meet those needs, and then we start down kind of the other list of normal operational things that might have to sit on the sidelines waiting for a particular package or we see how we get through the course of the year. And are we spending certain areas? Are we not spending in other areas? Can we do some shifts in the budget to start to meet some of those other not-as-critical operational areas so that we can make sure our COVID response is tight, strong, and we fully have staff and students protected?
Stan Reeser, District 4. Yes, it was nobody's fault. It just, there was somebody speaking, and at the very end, it said, we're $10 million in the hole. And then we moved on to another subject. And I was like, oh, that may have caused some confusion. And state law, we can't, we can't.
Correct.
We can't deficit spend, right?
That's correct.
And I don't, there's not one of us up here that would want to do that anyway, even if we had that authority. My second question is, if you had to break this down for the public, what is the dollar amount that is new money? And would you define what new money is at this maximum level?
So we had been.
Maximum authority.
Right. We had been, we'd been presenting, for the most part, all through the spring, that we anticipated based on the student count, the FTE count, and the increase in the base aid, that we were anticipating around nine to nine and a half million of kind of new base aid. Now, we've supported that with more LOB dollars because we're building a budget based on the 33%. And that's $13 million. If we hadn't gone up, that would have, you know, been a million or so of additional LOB authority, maybe two. So we're probably looking at around, as far as new money in the budget.
Excluding federal dollars.
Right, excluding all of those, around $22 million. Now, a good chunk of that, as we showed you in July, went to transportation, other fixed costs, and what we've had to respond already in technology and a few of those other areas. So realistically, a lot of that money is already allocated and moving through the budget. So, but I think, does that answer your question?
Yes, that does.
Okay.
Stan Reeser, District 4. And new money is basically just the additional dollars we have this year.
Right, right. It was dollars due to the increase in base aid, which was a 3% increase. Now, we didn't receive a full 3% because of the FTE change. So we came in at two and change.
Okay. And then my last question, I think it was late May or June, we spoke, we had a whole presentation about reserves.
Yes.
And I realize that projecting out ahead of time is almost impossible at this time because number one, we don't know what the Kansas Legislature is going to do in January when they reconvene and look at their tax revenues. By the way, how did July receipts come in?
July, July revenues beat the estimates so far.
They beat the revised.
Right, the revised estimates. But that also is a little bit challenging only because that, we have that deferral of the tax return date. So how much of that was actually tax dollars coming in? Although I think a lot of those taxpayers actually filed extensions. So again, maybe not as meaningful, but I think overall, the consensus revenue estimates, the revised ones, may have been a little bit aggressive. I think we'll see more in these coming months if that holds true. So we will be watching that as well.
So did our reserves end where we thought they were going to? And what are we projecting?
So our contingency, we reported that we ended the fiscal year with $26 million in contingency. So that.
And what's percentage is that? Because we spoke a lot about percentages at that meeting.
Well, we, I think where we, if I'm understanding your question, we had been sitting at four, and I'm going to put this in terms of days, actually, as opposed to percentages because we typically tell our stakeholders that when we had 14 and change in contingency, that was about six operating days. So at $26 million, we're going to be closer to 12 to 13 operating days. So we've improved our position. We now at least can cover a teacher payroll. That was kind of a big goal for us is to make sure that if anything happened, we could actually cover a teacher payroll. Now, as far as if we have to dip into that particular fund, if that's what you're asking, if we're forecasting ahead, I see, I see a need potentially. If we do not get additional federal packages, that we will probably have no choice but to look at that fund to support COVID response, whether it's with nutrition services or some other place. I don't know exactly what other needs might come up. It's good that we have the option to go to that particular fund. I'm hoping we can minimize the use of it because again, what we know is in front of us is, we have to meet those needs. But we're also looking ahead. What is fiscal year 22 going to look like? Are we going to be in a worst-case scenario if the state funds are in jeopardy? What's going to happen a year, two years out? So the more we can try to protect the bulk of that for '22, '23, whatever might be coming beyond just what's right in front of us right now, that's important for us to keep in. that's important for us to keep in our mind. That's, contingency is, is our only unplanned savings account for whatever might come at us. And we knew with an eight-hundred-million-dollar budget, fourteen million dollars in contingency was not, was, again, a very, very low percentage. Overall, that twenty-six million dollars puts us at around, I think this is probably where you were going, at around eleven percent, eleven to twelve percent based on the state's calculation of where dollars should kind of land. So we're still well under kind of the state averages of fourteen to sixteen percent across the state. So I feel we made good progress. I would, I could sleep better at night if we were closer to fifty million in contingency, but that's probably not realistic, knowing what's kind of coming down the, the next two or three years for us. So, but really being very intentional and purposeful when we go to look at the usages of those funds is going to be very important.
Stan Reeser, District Four. My last question. And today what we're doing is doing the maximum authority. So other than contractual obligations, as we go throughout the year, I mean, we could reduce the budget, correct? I mean, this is the maximum amount we can spend, but that does not prevent us if we can be, if we find ways to be thrifty in area, other areas, correct?
Correct, absolutely. And then we, and we do that. Every year, we, as we go through, we set that maximum budget authority. And, and staff exactly do what you're saying is they look for better purchasing power, areas where if we don't spend over here, then we can use those dollars over here because there are those cases where you, you have your best plan, but then the plan doesn't come through the way you anticipate. And perhaps it was, this particular project was twenty thousand dollars over. Well, we saved twenty thousand dollars over here, so we have, we're okay. We don't have to do any sort of moving budget around. And especially when you're in a fund. Now, when we get fund to fund, then we have to kind of look at the budget authority in a particular fund to make sure we don't go over. But yes, that, that is kind of the mission of your financial groups, to look for those areas of savings to allow for other areas in the budget that may go over in a particular year.
Stan Reeser, District Four. I think the board understood that. I just wanted to make sure that got out to the public as well. Thank you, Susan. Thank you for the whole team. And you guys have done a really great job this year and under difficult situations. Thanks.
Thank you.
Julie?
I don't have a budget question per se, but a related question, I think, for Superintendent Thompson. And that question is, how is our enrollment going? And our free and reduced food applications, just those things that are going to be important for our funding source.
Well, at this point, we don't know yet. Yeah, we, we typically will do a report on our budget around the, what day do we usually do that? Around our September twentieth number. That's when we will have official numbers on our enrollment.
Okay, so we don't have, I mean, you don't have any clue about whether,
We typically don't, don't have those numbers until we get to September twentieth.
Okay, but the enrollment process is going well?
Enrollment process is going, and we again will continue to encourage people regardless of what model that you want to select. We still need you to enroll, and we still need you to fill out your free and reduced lunch forms, even if you are remote. And you've already selected my school remote, you still need to come and fit, go back in and fill out that free and reduced number, I mean, free and reduced form so that we have that on record because we'll be coming back to share with you the new guidelines for nutrition services. And that is going to be critical for anyone who is to partake in our lunch programming to be able to have that on file. So numbers, we'll be able to get you more of those numbers by around September the twentieth. A little bit thereafter, we'll know what our official numbers are.
Thank you.
Ernestine, I want to ask if you have any questions? Ernestine, are you still with us? She may have dropped off. Wendy, could you call and see if we can get her back on? Mike?
Thank you. Stan brought up a good point talking about new money. And one of the things in the deficit that you showed in the last meeting of ten million dollars, and a lot of that probably comes up with new money. And there's new money and there's one-time money. And I want to make sure that people are understanding that just because we're getting a whole bunch of new money this year, a lot of it is one-time money that we won't get the year after.
So the, the minute we exercise the LOB, when we go to thirty-three percent, we will have those dollars kind of ongoing, but we'll never be able to add to it. So once we spend it and we embed it in the budget, it's, that's gone. That option to tap into that is gone. Some of the money from last year, when you see we ended the year with a seven-hundred-million-dollar actual expenditures, we actually did, some of those funds ended the year with some cash, which again, makes sense because there were several months where we didn't actually have school. Those funds had some one-time dollars that they're able to embed into this year's budget to meet safety concerns and the supply needs are, are just really quite remarkable. If, when you start to think about masks and thermometers and just the, the need to have separate supplies for students, things that, that, as people, as administrators and staff have gotten back into schools, all of these what-ifs, as we anticipated, have started to come in. So we're now kind of processing through all of those needs and, and, and saying, okay, there's budget here for that, there's budget here for that. Here's how we're going to, to cover these needs. So we're responding, but those, those kind of end-of-year balances are truly one-time dollars. So once those are gone and we spend those budgets, we're not going to have those into next year. The, the LOB, once we, we will have that ongoing, but we can't add to it. So I think that's what you're talking about, which is we won't, next year's new money will only be the difference in the base aid unless there's some other, you know, some other change to the formula. So right now, we can build the, that, that LOB, thirteen million dollars into the budget. Next year, when we are looking at more like seven million dollars of new money, we're going to have to obviously adjust for that.
Now are reconnected with Ernestine. Ernestine, do you have any questions on the budget?
I didn't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, did you finish your questions?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. And one of the things that, well, before we took the break, Susan made the comments about the one-time money. And one of the biggest things that I want to make sure people are understanding because it's, it's going to get lost in translation. The bus contract ate a bunch of our dollars this year that we didn't, well, we probably saw it coming, but we don't like to say that. And that's one-time money, or that's repetitive money that we're losing. It becomes one-time money, and that ate our budget up severely. We've been lucky with some things, and some of these numbers look really good. But I want to make sure people are understanding that by the time we get done in July and we're going through the budgets, we could be struggling and to build the next year's budget because the base state aid goes down next year, if I remember right.
The, the base, the base amount per student goes up, but we, we will be experiencing a five-hundred FTE decrease.
Right.
So we, we are kind of getting hit because that enrollment decline from nineteen to twenty was pretty significant.
And those are things that we need to keep in mind with our budget, especially with contingency because it sounds like we have a lot of money in contingency and those types of things. But with a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of deferred maintenance and on and on and on, and the technology is just going to keep going up and up and up, we've got to be careful that we're not containing that money and not getting to the numbers that make Susan comfortable because that's important. Because really, that's, that's going to save us in the future from having to cut programs. And that's the last thing that I want to do is cut a program, so. And those programs are probably going to be the ones we don't want to cut. Athletics, fine arts. We went through that in two thousand and five, and that was bloody. Luckily, we were able to save them. But, you know, that's, so we need to be careful about what we're doing with our one-time money and not using it as repetitive money, in my words. Thank you.
Stan?
Stan Reeser, District Four. Yeah, and on that, on the reserves too, you also got to try to hit that sweet spot because you don't want to have too much reserves where you're taxing people just to sit on their money. At the same time, you have to be fiscally responsible enough to be prepared for any kind of problems that come up. Cheryl, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we establish six PM, August twenty-fourth, here at North High, is a public hearing and public budget adoption for the twenty-twenty-one budget, if that's appropriate.
Okay, we, we have a motion by Stan and a second by Mike. And I'm seeing no other comments, so let's begin voting. Ron?
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at-large, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
Okay, you have your authority now, and we will have our budget hearing on the twenty-fourth. And if the public wants to come, we will make arrangements for that to happen. Although we're not allowing public in any other ways, and they'll have to be outside socially distanced with masks on and, and so on.
Correct, and they'll need to make the appointment.
Yes, they will need to call in ahead to, to the clerk of the board in order to reserve a spot.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Mike?
Under miscellaneous superintendent's report.
There's a lot going on, so I'm going to keep my report short. I'd like to remind all of our viewers that may have questions about my school remote that we just released a short video last week that explains what my remote, my school remote looks like. So pay attention to that on social media or on our website. And it is our first step on the journey to provide quick video explainers for our families that both explain what the different aspects of learning looks like in the fall. And it also answers common questions that typically our families have had over the time of our transition. Families can find that information about my school remote on our website, as I stated before, at www.usd259.org/wpsenroll. And I'd like to say thank you to our WPS staff for a group of employees who like structure and certainty and the return back to work. We know it's been a little bit of a stressful and kind of tap, getting your feet in there. And so we just want to say thank you for your efforts and the feedback that you've been providing to us. We really appreciate that. And we are making adjustments and celebrating the things that are going well and making adjustments on the things that we need to, to adjust on. And there's just a lot of changing that is happening in this world. And in some cases, we have questions for which there are no answers yet. So they just keep them coming, and we just continue to keep researching and looking for answers to any of the questions that continue to come our way. And you remember before that I asked us to all keep in mind the three words of flexibility, patience, and grace? And I will tell you, someone sent me a, a mask, and I should probably be wearing it, that says that, flexibility, patience, and grace. And I appreciate that staff member sending me that. We even talked about, somebody was even going to make me a T-shirt that I should wear every time. So I think it's really nice that we are really taking that to heart, that flexibility, patience, and grace. And that is so especially true now. And we are aware of all the questions that still remain, and we're working on the answers. And in many cases, the answers depend on the questions that must be answered first, that depend on the questions that need to be answered even before that. So as you can see, everything is just a, a process, and we'll go on through that. And as teachers return to the buildings and work with their principals and colleagues and have the opportunity to take part in creating answers and developing solutions, answers to questions that remain will be evolving over the next several weeks. And it's, I think it's really important to remember that the change we are making and we're experiencing now occurs at a pace that we have never seen before. So it's just going to take us time, and we're learning this together, we're growing together, and we will get through this together. And there is no question that the work is going to be hard. I just want you to know that we hear you, we see you, and we appreciate you and keep the questions and processing going because that's how we're going to get through this together. So with that being said, I'll end my remarks there.
Thank you. Next item?
Board of Education report requests.
Ron?
I have nothing.
Stan Reeser, District Four, no reports or requests.
Mike?
Mike Rody, District Five. I, this may be silly, but we're going to have the people coming into our meeting next,
Not next time, the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth, I'm sorry. And to speak. And I was wondering, I've been sitting here thinking, that's a great idea, and I want to do that. I want every, we've never had anybody show up, but it'd be great to have somebody come and discuss our budget with us. I was wondering if we could put that podium up there by that back door so we have limited exposure.
Because of cameras, I don't know, but we could,
It's just a request if it's possible.
I see the camera folks saying that they won't be seen, for sure they cannot be seen because of the way that we have our, our, yeah. They, they won't be able to be seen or heard from what we're looking up at our cast, I mean, our people up there.
The skybox.
So they will not be able to do that, but they can come through that door there and back out. Would that be appropriate there? Yes, so they can come in here and out, but if they're up there, they can't be seen or heard.
No, and I want them to be seen and heard. I just was asking the question now because I knew it would take some planning and,
Yep.
And I thought that was the best place to put them up in the corner because they walk two steps in and they're,
Yeah, that's a good, good. And we have a big hallway out there, so they'll be socially distanced out there in the hallway, and then they could come right in, and then they could come right back out.
That's interesting. We're getting an echo on our machine.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I just want to thank, again, our staff. They've reported back to work now. I'm hearing positive things. I'm hearing concerns, and I appreciate hearing those because as Dr. Thompson said, we're working to get answers as quickly as we can. But, but overall, our staff is doing yeoman's work as they come back in. They're figuring out how to socially distance in their building, how to put kids into classrooms, all the work that needs to be done at the site level, they're now doing. And you are wonderful. Thank you very much, staff, for your dedication to this district. We can't thank you enough. Julie?
It's already been, Julie Hedrick, District Two. It's already been said at this meeting, but I'm just going to say it again. Families, get out there and enroll and make sure that you fill out the related forms to enrollment for in-reduced lunch, even if you're on, on, in school remote. We still need those forms filled out. So just encouraging families to continue that enrollment process as we're moving through the month.
Ben?
Ben Blankley, District One. As I've been out doing essential errands, going to grocery stores and stuff, I'm seeing good behaviors in our community. I see a good portion of people wearing masks, staying apart. But at the same time, I open up Facebook and Twitter, and, and I see some folks not making real great choices. Birthday parties, you know, things like that. So I just wanted to say, we can, we can make the school environment as, as risk averse as possible. We're working real hard to make sure we're, we're getting the, the best, most accurate scientific data and implementing that into our buildings as we speak. You know, do the right things, wear a mask, stay away from large, closed groups indoors, wash your hands thoroughly. But when you go home, when you're, when you go into your communities, when, when our staff, you know, goes, you know, leaves our buildings, you got to continue to do those same things because it's about risk mitigation, and it has to be, you have to be aware regardless of where you're at. Like, I leave this, I leave this building, and let's say I go down to Dylan's, I'm going to still wear a mask. It's, it's, you know, it's still, it's still a public environment. So, you know, keep up those good behaviors. Our numbers are looking better every day. We actually, you know, we had a decrease in active cases for the first time in months. So that's, that's exciting. And then the other positive thing is that, you know, our district is very large. And compared to a lot of other very large districts, our community is actually doing really well. I mean, we're not great, but we're doing a lot better. And so that's going to make our decision on the twentieth even harder because it's not going to be a simple slam dunk. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be a real tough decision. So I know each one of us sitting at this table is, is going to really think hard about, about the responsibility and authority that we have coming. about the responsibility and authority that we have coming up at our next meeting. And on another note, there's still school supply drives going on all over our community, and I encourage anyone of means to participate in those. Our supply lists are a little different this year, because we're reducing the amount of shared supplies, especially at the elementary level. I know I went school shopping for my kiddo this, last week, and yeah, the list was a little different than, than I'm, than I'm used to. Of course, it's only the second year I've done this, so, you know, but it's, it's new experiences all the time. And of course, you know, now would be the point, as a parent of a kindergartner, that I would like go to the library and get books about, oh, going to school, and, and like, if, if anybody out there has any suggestions about picture books for this environment, please send them my way, because we're, you know, trying to, trying to explain as a parent, you know, "Yeah, you're going to school, but you're kind of, you're kind of not going to school." We drove by his magnet elementary, and I said, "Well, that's where you'll go, I guess." So it's just, it's just weird, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that this whole situation is just weird for everybody. And, and we're going to make the best of it together, and we're going to have disagreements, and certainly, we've already had some, and that's going to continue, but, but we'll get through this, and here we go. And that's all I have for today.
Flexibility, patience, and grace. We have to remember those three words. Ernestine, do you have any report or requests?
I want to just again reiterate what Cheryl was saying. I am so impressed with our staff, with the teachers creating alternative ways to teach the same subject that they've known works in this way, and now they have to do it in a different way. With our custodial staff, and they're stepping up to make sure that our facilities and our buildings are all clean and pristine. I'm just so impressed with the people who work for 259. Thank you to them all.
Thank you. Next item, Mike?
New business?
I am seeing none.
Executive session?
There is none today.
Adjournment?
It's been moved by Mike that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Ben Blankley, District One, a second.
Ben Blankley, second. Ben, why don't you start the vote, please, for adjournment?
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District Two, yes.
Cheryl Logan, At-Large, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Stan Reeser, District Four, yes.
Ron Rosales, District Six, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
And before I adjourn the meeting, our next meeting will be at, here at North High School, but at 6 o'clock in the evening. We will not have public and the news media at this meeting because of the, being in compliance, as we have done in the past with the COVID-19 rules, so. And at that meeting, we will be looking very carefully at the data to try to make the right decision for our district, for our staff, and for our students about what we're going to do with school, but right now, we have our, our models, and we continue to encourage people to enroll, fill out the forms, and that helps us make the decisions about how we staff our buildings and our classrooms. So thank you very much, and we will see you on August the 20th at 6:00. Thank you.